Good evening. Welcome to the August 1st meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker and President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting. We will stand, begin with the invocation by Mrs. Lynn Snead, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Dear God, on behalf of all those assembled here today, thank you for your abundant blessings on our community. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. We ask your protection for all those who serve to protect us, both at home and abroad. We ask your wisdom and guidance in decisions before us tonight and in the weeks and months to come. Guide our country amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, that we may engage in peaceful discussion, even when there is honest disagreement. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Swizer?
Here.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Move to excuse Mr. Kendall.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swizer and seconded by Mr. Phillips to excuse Mr. Kendall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall is excused. Move to excuse Mr. Heath.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Snead and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath is excused.
Tonight, we have one public hearing. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 034-2016.
Ordinance number 034-2016, changing the zoning of part of Outlots 119 and 120, parcel D08-096930, in the city of Troy from the zoning of R5, single-family residential unit, residential district, to M2 light industrial district.
I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? If so, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. What was the planning commission, what was the plans submitted to the planning commission for that lot from Habitat for Humanity?
You're saying what was the planning commission's plan for that?
What was the plans submitted to them from Habitat?
Submitted. Okay. Mr. Titterington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property is being requested to change and is in the process of being sold by Habitat to a company, a manufacturing company that is just, I guess, south, adjacent to that property. And so, as part of the sale, that sale is contingent upon rezoning it from the R5 designation to the manufacturing.
I'm not really against it rezoning, but access, where's access going to be to that property?
The access that does front Jeep Street, there is a piece of that parcel that is on Jeep Street.
Yeah, I know that.
And that's where the access would be, unless they were to extend Jeep Street, which I'm not aware that they're going to do that.
Who's going to pay for that expense?
That would be part of the development of the lot by the company.
So the city would have any involvement in it?
No, it would not unless there was some kind of an incentive that, you know, a grant that we receive from the state or the federal government or something like that. But no, that's not our responsibility.
Okay, so the city's not going to have no involvement in it at all?
You have to define involvement.
Money-wise?
Oh, not that we anticipate, but again, we have not seen detailed plans. They have not submitted anything to us yet, because this is just in the process of being sold at this point.
Okay. And you know, I was curious about that. What's the traffic going to be like there if this happens?
Again, that's going to depend on what they want to build and how they want to build it. They could, they could extend the building that they have there now. They could add a second building, we're just not sure. And as part of the building plans, those are the kind of questions that we will have to have answered before we approve it.
Before you approve it?
That's correct.
You'll have another meeting before then?
Not necessarily a council meeting. That would be an administrative thing internally, but that's part of our engineering and permitting process that we go through.
Okay. Because I was curious, because I live on Jeep Street, and wondering about the traffic, what's going to happen with that? And the neighborhood, it's really going to affect the neighborhood, traffic volumes now. That's my concerns.
Okay. Mr. Titterington, is there a way in the process to get his name and address and phone number in the file, so that if there's any follow-up, that you can, city can?
We'd be happy to take his information.
Let him know if there's, you know, further meetings or anything like that?
If there's a public meeting, then sure, we absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
And this goes to committee tomorrow night, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, but this is just the rezoning, and he's talking about the development later, so.
And we will need his name and address, please.
Right.
Bill Atkins, 1126 Jeep Street.
1126?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Snyder, 1020 Race Drive. The proposed purchaser of the land, can that be divulged at all? I hear at Spectra Camp.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. The, just exactly how much property is he planning on purchasing here from them? Is it just a small park behind him, or is it the whole property?
Because, you know, this isn't, this L-119 and 120 doesn't jive up with the map that I have at all in any way. Do you have acres on that?
I believe it's just what was reserved, so I think it's probably approximately 50 foot wide, and last one, 119 and 120.
2.69 acres.
So I think we need to.
It's all of this that he's planning on?
And yes, 2.69.
So everything that's marked in red on this map is what he's proposing to purchase? And all the way down to here?
Yeah, 2.69.
Okay. So, okay, if he does that, then he would have access over here then?
It does appear along Top Union.
On Union Street then?
Yeah.
Okay. The other question is, there's an easement on my plans that I have of that plot and everything. There's an easement back there, alley easement. What's the plans on that? Does that, is that going along with that property, or is it being divided between the two properties, or?
Well, you're talking about it being vacated, and that's not part of this. This is just the rezoning. I'm not aware of those plans. Again, we don't have any detailed plans from Spectra Camp yet, because my understanding is they haven't decided how they would want to expand.
Well, that would be something the city would have to decide.
That's correct.
About the easement?
That's correct. And if we, if there wasn't a vacation that was included, that would be a separate action that would have to come to the council.
Okay. So, okay, as far as Spectra Camp, I have no problems with them, other than it has increased truck traffic down there. But then, what she was saying here, that possibly, if he gets, takes all of this all the way to Union Street, then he would have access off of Union Street, and it might even alleviate the traffic problem down there, so. But, you know, that's, like you say, you don't know for sure. But, so as is, if that's what he's going to do and everything, I have no problems with him, because he's been very clean, been a very good neighbor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, yeah, is there anyone else wishes to speak in favor of? Anyone wishes? Okay.
My name is Steve Justice. I'm counsel for Spectra Camp, and I'm assisting Habitat for Humanity with this particular zoning. We obviously are only seeking to rezone the property at this time. It was previously zoned for industrial use. It was converted to residential use when Habitat bought the property, with the hope of building some homes there for a number of reasons, which are not necessarily pertinent to all this discussion right now. Habitat is not able to proceed with that and desires to sell the property. Spectra Camp, as the neighbor just indicated, has been a very good neighbor, is simply seeking to buy this abandoned railroad property at this point in time to facilitate their operations. I anticipate that Spectra Camp largely will use this for anything, for parking. Right now, when trucks pull up to Spectra Camp, they have to literally almost park on the street in order to unload, which interrupts traffic on Race Drive, and this will allow them to literally pull into the parking lot to unload and potentially to drive through and go out onto Jeep Street, which they will be able to build up a throughway. So, it'll be a safer mechanism. It will provide less interruption to the traffic on the adjacent streets. And so, this is really sort of restoring the property back to what its use was prior to the time that Habitat decided to try to develop it for residential properties, so. I'm available to answer any questions that the council may have, but otherwise, so, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone wish to speak against the ordinance?
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. My name is Brian Joseph. I live at 1004 East Race Drive. And the first question that I want to propose to city council is, how would you like light industrial in your immediate backyard? Right now, we have a, I would say, the second most benefit to my house is in the backyard, the canopy that we get to enjoy. First is the good, hard-working neighbors. Approximately 12, maybe 13 years ago, I approached Habitat for Humanity to find out what the story was. At the time, the gentleman running Habitat offered to sell that to me. He wanted to get out from underneath the tax burden. We came to an agreement. I saved my money, called them up. Somebody else was running Habitat for Humanity, and they were planning on putting homes on that property. So many words, I told them good luck. About three years later, I call up Habitat for Humanity, because I saw nothing was being followed through. Somebody else was running Habitat for Humanity, and she advised me or let me know that she was having it appraised and would put it on market for market value, which far exceeded what the original agreed price was that I had come to. You put something like that in my backyard? The house isn't worth it. The property values will plummet. Yes, it's a nice tax incentive for the city, but I wanted to leave the woods as they were, so the neighbors and I could enjoy it. That's, like I said, the second best thing about owning that house is the woods in the I think this would be a grave mistake. I think traffic would increase exponentially. My property, Ellis Street, actually, once upon a time, was supposed to run through my driveway. The city has granted me and my neighbor access. Now I'm looking at possibly losing that portion of what my neighbor and I have come to use. So there's a lot of negatives. And there again, first and foremost, would you want light industrial in your immediate backyard? If their business is growing by leaps and bounds, great, find a new location. Don't destroy the residential properties in the neighborhood. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience that has any comments against this?
I gave them multiple opportunities to sell it to me, to leave it as it was. Danger it now.
Right.
I made a perfect offer, of course, I want to say that. Just keep it the way it is. I think let's go in together.
Okay. Any other comments? I declare the public, oh, please come forward.
Please, we need more people.
Hi, my name's Gloria Vashore. We have the 1008 Race Drive there. I have to agree with him totally that to interrupt this property back there and take that woods away from the homes down there, it, the values would go down to nothing. And to put industrial, like you said, they have to expand and get out of the property. There isn't much down there to offer in that neighborhood for children and places and something for them to have that they aren't worried about, industry and chemicals and this company, who knows what else that they've been ever since their business. And if we rezone this, there's a number of businesses that could come in there and do any number of things. So, I have to agree with this gentleman here that we can leave it the way it is. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Was this previously zoned, and we're just trying to get it zoned back to the way it was?
Yes.
And so it was rezoned 15 years ago or so, somewhere?
10, 15.
So this would just take it back to the zoning that was there originally, before it was rezoned for Habitat?
Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the July 18th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, July 18, 2016. Committee reports. Streets and sidewalks committee reported that committee recommends legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the sidewalk improvement program. Committee recommended that council adopt the ODOT consent legislation for a paving portion of State Route 55. Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing application for OPWC funds for Mackay Road Improvement Phase IV. Resolution number R30-2016, application to OPWC, was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R31-2016, consent to ODOT for resurfacing part of State Route 55, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 032-2016, authorizing bidding for Phase IX sidewalk program, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 033-2016, amending salary ordinance related to fire lieutenant position, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 034-2016, rezoning, first reading. Ordinance number 035-2016, approving investment policy of the city, was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance 036-2016, imposing moratorium for 180 days on granting of permit regarding retail dispensaries, et cetera, for medical marijuana, was given first reading and adopted. Following comments, council adjourned 7:25.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to adopt or approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Moving on to committee reports. Finance Committee has a report for us tonight, in Chairman Kendall's absence. Mr. Tremblay, would you please present that report?
Yes, so will, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met on July 18th of 2016. This committee met to review the recommendation of the city auditor. The committee met July 18th to review the city auditor's recommendations for authorizing bank depository agreements. We support the recommendation of the city auditor and recommend that legislation be prepared to authorize bank depository agreements with the financial institutions of US Bank, Troy Main Source Bank, Fifth Third Bank, Minster Bank, and Unity National Bank. With the August 22 expiration of the current agreements, we ask that the legislation be presented as an emergency measure. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swizer, myself, and Mr. Kendall as the chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
The next report is from the Law and Ordnance Committee, and Chairman, Mr. John Swizer.
Yes, Madam President. I have one report. This committee met on July 18th to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that council accepts the dedication of right-of-way at two locations within the city. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the dedication of the following rights of way, as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. Number one, 1.15 acres of existing in-lot 10577 along the west side of Troy Sidney Road. And number two, 0.925 acres of existing in-lot 7133, 7134, and 7135 along the 1400 block of East Staunton Road and the 1500 block of Old Staunton Road. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Ms. Snead, and myself as chair.
Do any council members have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Swizer. The next report is from the Recreation and Parks Committee. Chairman Brock Heath is not here tonight. Robin, do you have that up?
Sure.
Go ahead and give us that one.
On July 26, 2016, this committee met to consider recommending, recommending the finalization of the sale of a portion of Duke Park North, formerly the Hules Camp Farm, to the Board of Commissioners of Miami County Park District. Council previously authorized a real estate purchase option agreement for the land to be sold to the County Park District. Having received notice of the approval of a grant to fund the land purchase, the County Park District is exercising the option to purchase the land at $7,100 per acre, which land has been surveyed at approximately 40.630 acres. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to finalize the sale of approximately 40.630 acres of Duke Park North to the Board of Commissioners of Miami County Park District, as authorized by the Real Estate Purchase Option Agreement between the city and the County Park District, so that the, so that the purchase and transfer of land can be completed when requested. We support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, myself, Doug Tremblay, and Brock here. Heath is chair.
Any questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. We'll now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address before addressing council.
Andrew Luring, 478 Robin Hood Lane. I'm here today at the request of Bailey Williams. Bailey Williams is a wonderful young man who's been demonstrating that black lives matter in front of the courthouse for the last 14 or 15 days. The council is invited to come and stay in solidarity with the youth who want to see greater justice in this country. It will be from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. August 7th. Thank you. We also ask that the police and fire come out, and all of the city of Troy.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments? We'll move on then. We have no resolutions on our agenda tonight, so we'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance 034-2016.
Ordinance number 034-2016, ordinance changing the zoning of part of Outlots 119 and 120, parcel number D08-096930, in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R5, single-family residential district, to M2 light industrial district. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. I believe there is a committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 6:45 p.m. Second reading.
Now, this will go to a third reading then, and again, that meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:45 p.m. here in council chambers, and that's a committee meeting. It is open to the public. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 037-2016.
Ordinance number 037-2016, ordinance accepting the dedication of a right-of-way. This is 1.150 acres along the west side of the 1500 block of Troy Sidney Road, adjacent to Duke Park North, as been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Swizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 038-2016.
Ordinance number 038-2016, ordinance accepting the dedication of a right-of-way. This is 0.925 acres that located along the south side of the 1400 block of East Staunton Road and the 1500 block of Old Staunton Road, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Snead and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mrs. Snead to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 039-2016.
Ordinance number 039-2016, ordinance authorizing the deposit of public funds of the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the result of the bidding for public funds that has to be done every five years, and based on the recommendation of city auditor, council authorized US Bank NA, Troy, Main Source Bank, Fifth Third Bank, Minster Bank, and Unity Bank, all to the financial institutions for deposit of public funds, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mrs. Snead to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Chwilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Snead and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips? Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-40, 2016.
Ordinance Number O-40, 2016. Ordinance authorizing the sale of a municipal property that is longer needed for a public purpose and declaring an emergency. This is a portion of what is known as Duke Park North that will be sold to the County Park District, first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Snee and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Beamich, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Well, yes, three items. One, we have all been invited to, the future begins today, as they celebrate their new location on Staunton Road next to Troy High School. That will take place Wednesday, October, or, excuse me, I keep saying it. Wednesday, August the 3rd. And they also, as part of their open house, will also be awarding last dollar grants to a number of the students. And we have been invited to, you know, to be there and to show our support, so that's one item. The other item, after our council meeting last time, our distinguished citizen Ozzy Hadad dropped off something for us, and it was from, many of us know that the CreditMonkey.com does national surveys. They did one on Midwest, and they looked at Ohio, and they named, said Ohio was a great place to live, which we, who live here, know that. However, they also asked what local cities in the state of Ohio are the happiest cities to live in. And it was limited to populations of 20,000 or more. Again, Mr. Hadad shared this information, and Troy was ranked seventh in the state, second in the southwest, next to Beaver Creek. That means, you know, warm and friendly Centerville, I think, was 17th. So that puts us in good light with, because that's a good, great community as well. That's the second thing. I thought that was good news to start August off. And this is even better. And I want to share this. If you remember the last council meeting, I shared that we would be sending a letter of support to the French Embassy, and we did. And I received today a card, I'd like to read it, because I think it's something that you and the citizens of Troy should be very proud. And this comes from the ambassador. "We are very moved by your message of sympathy and solidarity with the French people following the terrorist attacks in France. On behalf of the President of the French Republic, the French government, and the French people, we would like to say thank you very much for this support. France will continue to combat terrorism, anti-Semitism, and any forces that seek to attack our shared values of freedom, democracy, and human rights. Yours sincerely," and signed. I'll pass it around so you can look at it, because I can't make out the signature. But it's a very nice, warm card that shows that they do appreciate our efforts in showing care and love to all people. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Any council members have any comments this evening? Mrs. Oda?
I was contacted and asked if there's any updates on what's going on at the Royal Inn, or if there's any, evidently, it's a hotspot for drug activity, and I don't see the police chief here tonight.
No, I mean, we continue, our investigations are undercover. Obviously, we don't want to-
But it is on the city's radar.
But it is, absolutely.
So, in light of the email today about the ducks and the geese, I'm assuming it would be more prudent to have police officers, you know, out at the Royal Inn or somewhere.
They're working.
I'm sorry, that was, you understand my point.
Absolutely. The chief, and I, and the mayor talk about priorities all the time, and I think we have them fairly well-aligned.
All right. I told this person that I would ask and make sure that the Royal Inn is on the city's radar, so, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Any comments from any city staff members tonight? Anyone else in the audience have any comments this evening? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week. Meeting adjourned.